I would like to call meeting to order. It is seven o'clock PM. This is the regular meeting of the Township of Washington. In accordance with the requirements of New Jersey statutes regarding open public meetings, notice that this meeting was legally advertised in the Courier-Post and South Jersey Times and posted on the bulletin board in municipal mail. Fire exits are located through double doors to your left and right. Please silence all mobile devices. This meeting is being videotaped. Anyone who does not wish to see or tell us to make the excuse. This will be shown on Comcast nine every week, Sunday at nine PM, Wednesday at seven PM, Friday at ten PM, and Saturday at ten PM. We'll continue until the next meeting. This meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube and can be found at WT-TV productions under live or on the agenda, which is on the township's official website. Please rise for the place allegiance. Flag allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for its standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. I'd like to call up Antoni Renata in honor of Flag Day. She's going to sing our pledge of uh, our national anthem. Thank you, Antoni. I don't know how you do it better.
Thank you.
Captain Nurkis, want to say something?
Yes, thank you. That was beautiful. Thanks so much. Every time you sing it, it gets better and better.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here tonight. And I just figured I'd take maybe a minute of your time to learn what is Flag Day. Flag Day celebrates the symbolism and history of the Stars and Stripes. President Woodrow Wilson, or 28th president, issued a proclamation establishing as on June 14th as Flag Day in 1916. Brief history of the flag. June 14, 1777, Continental Congress adopted by resolution, the flag shall be thirteen stripes of alternate red and white with the union of thirteen stars of white and a blue field representing the new constellation. The first date, the first time, I'm sorry, the first time the new flag was carried into battle was September 1st, no, September 11, 1777. September 11, 1777. I don't think I've ever heard a newscaster say that from who talked about the tragedy of nine eleven. Maybe there's some other, I don't know. But this was at the Battle of Brandywine. Under Captain Paul Jones of the Ranger, which today would be a USS Ranger, was the first saluted our flag by a foreign naval vessel February 14, 1778 when it arrived in a French port. Both President Wilson and Calvin Coolidge, who was our 30th president, although issuing proclamations asking that June 14th be observed as the National Flag Day, wasn't until August 3rd of 1949, Congress approved the national observance of our 33rd by our 33rd president, Harry Truman, signing it into law. Question. When the War of 1812 was fought, that's why the National Anthem is sung so often because it started as a poem, became a national anthem. How many states did we have? Does anyone know? What was that word? At eighteen. The war. The war, the National Anthem was adopted, was that first issued September 14th, 1814 by Francis Scott Key during the War of 1812. And three months later, the Treaty of Guy was signed, ending the battle. And then everything took place at Fort McHenry in Baltimore when the war against the British Navy was about to begin, I'm sure. But just want to thank you for your recognition.
Thank you, Captain Nurkis. Move on to the roll call.
Mr. Delphine?
Here.
Mr. DeBorello?
Here.
Mr. Bennett?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Yurkis?
Present.
Mayor Gazzanelli?
Here.
Mrs. Backich?
Here.
Mr. Pluck?
Here.
Move on to presentations. First, we want to recognize for heroism and valor to Salon Rain, the Police Department, Washington Township Fire Department, Washington Township Ambulance Squad.
Thank you, Captain Nurkis. Good evening, everyone. On May 4th, 2023, at 3:40 PM, Washington Township Emergency Services, EMS, Fire, and Police were dispatched to 344 Green Tree Room for a report of a cardiac arrest. 911 was called for a female who went unconscious inside the salon. An employee initiated chest compressions while 911 was being called. Sergeant Longfellow, WTPD, and Fire Chief Pat Dolges, WGFD, were first to arrive unseen within minutes due to their proximity to the location. Sergeant Longfellow took over compressions while Chief Dolges applied his AED, which provided an immediate shock to the patient. Chief Dolges then began providing rescue breathing while Sergeant Longfellow and another patrol officer provided compressions. During several cycles of CPR, faint pulse was detected, but the patient was not breathing. Paramedics in Spira, Life Support 3 Joe Adelman, and James Temple arrived. Also arriving was Washington Township Ambulance Supervisor John Sennett and other Washington Township ENTs. As medics began their treatment and assessment, pulses were not present and additional rounds of CPR continued by emergency service personnel. A short time later, pulses were found to be present. Additional law enforcement and fire department personnel assisted with the scene and the patient was transferred into the ambulance, at which time the patient began to breathe on her own. It was later reported that the patient survived the cardiac arrest event. This evening, we have some special guests with here and here with us. When you hear your name, if you're here, if you can come up. Chief Dolges. Joey Adelman? Dana Essing? Ronald Pillar? John Sennett III? John Sennett Jr.? June Temple? Officer Chik Tella? Officer Hendrickson? And Sergeant Longfellow? Would you like to say your words?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. This event means so much to me, and I know I'm speaking on behalf of the other emergency responders here. I've been teaching CPR since 1990. And some of the fundamental things that we teach is this thing called a chain of survival. And it consists of six links. The first link is early recognition. That's when somebody recognizes, somebody goes into sudden cardiac arrest and immediately picks up the phone and calls 911. On that day, that occurred. The second link in the safe uh, chain of survival is early CPR. That was done flawlessly. Excellent job. Which is one of the most important aspects of CPR because that keeps the oxygenated blood flowing to the brain and the other vital organs until the other components can arrive. The third link in the chain of survival is early defibrillation. When somebody goes into sudden cardiac arrest, they have literally minutes. Every minute that passes in sudden cardiac arrest, they lose a 10% chance of survival. Studies have shown with early CPR and early defibrillation, it can increase the chances of survival up to 74%. The next link is advanced resuscitation. And that's when the team of emergency responders arrived. We're very fortunate in this community that all of our police officers, our EMS folks, our paramedics from in Spira, and our fire department are obviously all trained in CPR, carry AEDs, and we carry resuscitation equipment. On that day, all those components fell in place at the right time, at the right moment. That advanced resuscitation involves many people to ensure that every two minutes, we're cycling out, people doing compressions, to make sure we're given the best chance for that patient. The next link in the chain of survival, the fifth one, is the rehabilitation and post-cardiac arrest care. When somebody goes into cardiac arrest, sometimes things really get messed up for the patient. When the brain loses oxygen, the organs start to fail, and they have a long road to recovery. In this case, because all the actions took place in a reasonable amount of time, the patient was very fortunate. The final link is recovery. Recovery in some patients is a long road. But at the end of the day, they survived the event. We spend more in coffee in a week than it takes to pay for a CPR course. And there is no reason why everybody in this room or anybody in the community does not know or learn CPR. So I implore you, please reach out to your local organizations, reach out to American Red Cross, American Heart Association, find a course and take it. It truly will make a difference, and on this day, it did. And I'm glad we were there to be able to help the family.
So it's the awareness, right? When you look at, you see somebody, you see that something's not right, whether you know them or not, sometimes you just see that and you see that struggle. For you to have jumped in at that moment and do the right thing and know what to do. We applaud you this evening. We applaud you this evening, absolutely. You know, and this is what happens, and that's it. You know, that's the point that Chief is bringing up here, we all, myself included. You know, we just started something, Council President had made a few calls over to Jefferson. We're actually partnering with them so that we can get our coaches in town, you know, up to par, taking the CPR classes so that we do have somebody on the field at any given time. We do have, you know, EMTs there for certain tournaments and whatnot, but not for every day. You know, we've all seen or heard or experienced something that if someone was there to help, you know, it could have turned out a little bit differently. You know, I myself, 27 years ago, my dad, driving, had a massive heart attack. If it weren't for a Fazio cement truck driving past and seeing him slumped over the wheel, we wouldn't have had that last week with him. To be able to speak to him and let him know how we felt, that's 27 years ago. This guy stopped, turned that truck around, got my dad out of the vehicle, pulled him out, put him on the ground, and started compressions. And because of that, we were so grateful. He was the first one that showed up at the funeral that year. He wanted to make sure that we knew he did everything he possibly could to save him. In the end, ultimately, he passed a week later. But the knowledge that you get from this and how you can help somebody else, truly that's what it's about. Thank you. We're just going to take some photos of the families. If you'd like to come up and take some photos with your family members there, as well as our county members.
Senator TV Barley, that's the squad.
Oh, I'm sorry. TV? Come on up.
No explanation, no explanation, good guy, that's right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Isabel. You know, for everyone being here this evening and doing the job that you did and ultimately saving lives. So thank you so much for all of that. So if you don't mind, we'll have some of the family members come up if they'd like to take some photos. We'll do that, and we'll just take a moment to do that. Thank you.
Mayor?
I would just like to thank everybody. I didn't know.
Thank you again.
No, I didn't know who was all there. Actually, I didn't know who was all there.
Good job.
Stay, can we stay? We're going to join in for this.
Smart man.
Great job, guys.
Great job.
Thank you.
That's all right, I do the same thing. They all blend together. They all blend together now.
A month later, she's standing in front of you. I don't think in the thirty years that I've been here.
Alright, ready? We're gonna move on to our proclamation to support a lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, LGBTQ, Pride Month for June.
And we have a proclamation. Alright, we have a proclamation this evening for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer plus LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Whereas the Township of Washington is a community that values diversity, equity, and inclusion, and is committed to equal rights and opportunities for all its residents. The Township of Washington recognizes the important contributions of its LGBTQ plus residents to the township's history, culture, economy, and civic life. June twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three marks the fifty-fourth anniversary of the Stonewall riots, an event that gave rise to the beginning of the gay rights movement in the United States. June is now recognized across the country and in the state as Pride Month. We celebrate the accomplishments of the LGBTQ plus community towards securing important rights and freedoms, often through struggle and adversity. We acknowledge the important efforts of those in our community and schools and those leaders who support our LGBTQ plus residents that prioritize social, emotional learning, health, and safety, and respect for others. Whereas as mayor of the Township of Washington, on behalf of Township Council, we affirm our support for our LGBTQ plus residents, including our students and our employees, vendors, and visitors, and stand with them to protect their civil rights and ability to live openly without fear. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and Township Council of the Township of Washington, County of Gloucester, do hereby proclaim June twenty twenty-three as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in the Township of Washington. Be proclaimed this fourteenth day of June twenty twenty-three.
Next, we're gonna move on to the presentation for the County House Road Project Concept Plan.
That could count for president, just so I can introduce this to the, uh, to the public and to the, uh, people that are here tonight. Uh, the mayor and council in effort to be more transparent with our academic development, our redevelopment, or development projects, have put in a new, um, procedure whereby, uh, potential developers can come before council and make a presentation of a potential project through a concept plan. This is a process that gives the public and council an idea of what the folks that are coming before us are proposing, where they're proposing, what kind of development it might be. None of this is, is obviously before any board for approval, planning board, zoning board, redevelopment. This is simply a concept only. The idea is to get it before the public's eye for an effort of transparency as soon as possible, so that the public wants to weigh in, they can. All too often, not necessarily in Washington Township, but in other places, the people don't know that development's happening until the bulldozers show up next to their properties and they're starting to clear out property for development, even though they've gone through many years of, of, uh, public hearings through the governing body and planning boards and zoning boards. But this is even a more transparent way of having somebody make a presentation. So, uh, there's no testimony that's gonna be sworn in or anything like that. It's simply a concept presentation and, um, we're gonna hopefully do this. Uh, the township gets multiple requests for development, uh, each, each week, and we look at, we look at all of them and, and very few actually get to this point. Nobody's endorsing this process, this project at all at this time. We're gonna hear about it, we're gonna see what they have to say, and, um, and see if we're gonna move forward. So, without further ado.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
You're welcome. If you need to identify who you are.
Holy Castro. Mark Holy Castro, turn it to the, uh, position. Please take your time, correct?
Kyle McKenna, um, site civil engineer, going on to a hearing, so yeah, looking as well.
So, it was very, do you share the, uh, the, uh?
Very, very brief presentation this evening, and obviously whatever questions you all have, we're gonna take also answer questions. Sure. Um, I apologize to the public, I can only face the, the drawing one way at a time, but happy that.
Let us know, we can ask whatever the board's.
I, I, we, we kind of have an idea, but I have a, I have a, we need the Council of Washington. Better face it to the public and to the, uh, to the, uh, live stream. Here you go.
Perfect. Thanks, Scott.
Okay, well, thank you guys for the time tonight, uh, this evening. So, the site we're looking at, uh, the address is, uh, it's on one thirty-four County House Road. It's at the corner of Delsey Drive, County House Road. Uh, it's comprised of four different lots, approximately fifty-five acres in total area. Under, under existing conditions, it's a middle developed site, um, again, fronting state highway, Delsey Drive, and, uh, County House Road. Uh, just orientation, north is to the top of the page on this plan. Uh, some of the colors, so the bright colors you see, those are environmentally sensitive areas that we've, uh, located. And we have, uh, delineated those and drawn them out, um, for reference.
Rhenite wetlands.
So, wetlands, uh, there's also a stream, uh, near the southern portion of the property, uh, that we've done a flood study on to help delineate the limits of that stream, both from a riparian environmental perspective and also from a flood hazard perspective. The zoning wise, so redevelopment plan for this area, um, the majority of this place is in the corridor area, so the western half of the site. It's kind of, um, it's an interesting shape site. Um, it, there's a piece of, the majority of it is up along County House and Delsey. There's a component of the site also that, um, traverses along the western, uh, limits of the property. Now, either southern area near that stream, uh, as well. So, uh, a kind of a unique sha- shaped lot. Frontage, um, up near the northeast corner of Delsey Drive, County House Road. So, under the proposed development, again, this is just conceptual at this point, uh, there'd be a subdivision for two different lots. So, what we're referencing as Lot A would be, um, the corner, the, the corner of Delsey Drive, County House Road. What we're proposing there would be, um, a warehouse and industrial building. Um, uh, this particular concept shows broken into four different tenants. So, they're gonna be smaller, uh, warehouse and/or industrial commercial uses, not a big regional distribution center like Amazon. Not an Amazon, things like that. This would be, um, you know, smaller local distribution, maybe a larger, uh, commercial, um, uh, business, like an HVAC or plumbing, et cetera. Uh, and then on the southern portion of the site, there would be, uh, a residential development, um, kind of tucked back here, um, naturally buffered by some of the natural features of the site. Uh, and that would be comprised of, again, this essentially shows up to ninety-six, uh, townhomes, um, with a small community center as well, um, uh, and commodities. Access would be, uh, for truck traffic or, uh, commercial vehicles would be from Delsey Drive. Uh, there would also be a access to the residential property along County House. That also serve the vehicular parking along County House Road as well. Uh, we would need the redevelopment plans criteria for, for buffers along County House Road for the residents, uh, to the north of County House Road, and also to the proposed residential use to the, uh, west and south. That's really, that's really all as, as far as that line. I'm happy to take any questions.
Happy for questions.
Council President, can I ask a couple of fundamental questions? So.
Sure.
If you were to proceed, um, how much acreage there be on the, that's called warehouse logistics industrial side?
Yeah, so, proposed Lot A is what we're referencing as a warehouse side. That would be, uh, it's approximately twenty-five acres, approximately twenty-four of those are developable. Um, and then on Lot B, which is the residential property, it would be approximately thirty acres, which approximately half of that is developable.
And with respect to the proposed warehouse industrial uses, do you have an idea of what the, what the proposed, uh, uh, building square foot, square footage might be?
This concept depicts approximately three hundred and fifty thousand square feet.
Three hundred and fifty thousand square feet?
Correct, definitely.
Now, currently, right now, um, does this proposed concept plan meet the requirements of the redevelopment, uh, zone for that area, that quarter?
So, there are two exceptions where we would not. Um, like I said, the majority of the site is within the corridor area. If the entirety of the site was in a corridor area, we wouldn't meet the criteria outlined in the development plan.
Just wanted to point that out.
Yes, sure, certainly. Um, so, like I said, the, the very corner of County House Road, there's one lot, it's actually Lot one point zero three, that corners, uh, County House and Delsey is within the node area of the redevelopment plan, which was done, which was, uh, does not permit the warehouse use. It's, uh, primarily commercial, um, retail, um, and some other, uh, similar uses. So, because of that, uh, this plan as presented would not meet that criteria, uh, because of that note, the notes up there.
What else do you have?
There, there's also another very similar, I think it's an intertwined, um, requirement. There's a setback requirement that requires a portion of the building to be set close to the right way, ten to fifteen feet. So, if it were, um, a commercial use within that node area, we would actually pull the building, uh, towards Delsey Drive, uh, whereas we have the setback where we think that, given the nature of the use, that would be appropriate.
We like the setback.
Setback, yeah.
So, out of the proposed, um, square footage of the warehouse industrial use, what would be the maximum type of building from grade fifty?
We, we would expect the maximum might be fifty E, which doesn't meet the redevelopment plan criteria. For both the node and quarter, actually.
Say a good lot.
Yes.
That's all I have for now.
Do you have any questions?
They just roughly have a pool of wood. It's ballpark, yeah.
I think that's a tough, uh, question to answer. If it was more of like a local distribution and storage for, you know, like ancillary storage for a little possible or something, it would be much lower, but if it's, um, you know, an HVAC, um, type service, or, you know, a, a large commercial plumbing facility, it might have more employees there, or like a little distribution, perhaps more employees. Um, we are, the ordinance does require, um, a total of three hundred, um, uh, literally three hundred and fifty parking spaces one per thousand, like for this size of use. So, that may give you an idea of what the maximum, um, type of employment would be, but, um, a portion of that is permitted to be banked. So, I think the redevelopment plan anticipate or permits, um, uh, seventy of those spaces to be banked. Again, just this size.
Thank you. Any more? Yeah, I, I know we used, uh, a couple of months ago. Forget about the housing backyard. How many units?
This concept would, uh, permit up to ninety, ninety-six. And there'd be more of a townhome layout and those to be that we receive. So, uh, again, it's, it's plus or minus, but that's what we had conceptually laid out here.
How many would be running for a house solution?
Um, I believe it's, yeah, I believe it's twenty percent, uh, above that criteria. Yeah, probably. So, we would need the, the, the criteria outlined in the redevelopment plan.
Anyone else? Appreciate coming out, appreciate your time. And, uh. Alright, we're gonna move on to the bill list. Can I get a motion to approve the bill list for June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three?
Motion.
Roll call.
Mr. Yurkis?
Yeah.
Mr. DeBorallo?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Delugue?
Yes.
Move on to the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three budget workshop public meeting minutes for May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, and the regular meeting minutes for May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three? Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Yurkis?
Yes.
Mr. DeBorallo?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Delugue?
Yes.
And move on to the budget. Resolution one fifty-four. Resolution for conducting a public hearing for the adoption of the twenty twenty-three municipal bill, uh, budget. Can I get a motion to approve resolution one fifty-four?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Yurkis?
Yes.
Mr. DeBorallo?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Delugue?
Yes.
So, anyone wishing to speak on the twenty twenty-three budget, please come up and state your name and address, please. Seeing none, can I get a motion to close the public on the twenty twenty-three budget?
Second.
Full in favor?
Aye.
Resolution one fifty-five. Resolution adopting the twenty twenty-three municipal budget. Can I get a motion to approve resolution one? I'm sorry. Resolution one fifty-five, resolution adopting the twenty twenty-three resolution, uh, municipal budget. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution one fifty-five?
Motion.
Second. Okay, before we go into vote, um, I just wanna discuss a little bit about, uh, the budget and, uh, what were proven. As you know, as council, we know that every resident would love to see the budget go up, zero up every year. As an administration, we would love to do that as well. We know that there's some residents who struggle every month making their budgets work, um, in their own homes. We know in this place, all of us up here live that with you, ourselves with our own families. We know any increase whatsoever will make that struggle a little bit harder. But unfortunately, if we're having a thorough look at the budget and assessing the current situation our township is in, we have no other responsible choice at this time to accept the budget proposed with a tax increase. One cent, the tax increase of four cents. One cent in, increase is equal to a four hundred seventy-two thousand, seven hundred seventy dollars tax revenue. This tax increase of four cents breaks down to approximately ninety-two dollars per year, where seventy, seven dollars and sixty-six cents per month, per household, with an average valuation of two hundred thirty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars. I want to explain what we feel has led to this predicament and why this unfortunate increase is necessary. We currently have over two hundred and fifty municipal employees. Majority are represented by six collective bargaining agreements that we are contracted through. Over the past seven years, taxes have gone up one cent in twenty twenty-one, they have, in twenty twenty-one. During the last seven years, our salary and benefits have increased from thirteen million, nine hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and six dollars in tw- twenty seventeen to sixteen million, three hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and three dollars in tw- this current year. That's an increase of almost, uh, that's an increase of two million, four hundred and fifty thousand even. Our pension payments have also gone up from two million, nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars in twenty seventeen to a cost of four million, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars in twenty twenty-three. That's another increase of one million, seven hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars. Our trash and recycling contract expired in twenty twenty-one. The annual cost of trash and recycling back in twenty seventeen was two million, five hundred thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. The annual cap cost of trash and recycling in twenty twenty-three is going to be three million, eight hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars. That's an increase of one point three million dollars. We spent five hundred thousand dollars remediating a plant that was, uh, a private entity that was left unattended, that we had to take care of, and, um, various other things we gotta take care of in town. We incurred almost twenty percent increase in the cost of healthcare, just this year alone. That cost was nine hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars, just this year alone. If you add all that up, our, our bills have increased six million, eight hundred thousand dollars in the last seven years. With the one cent increase, we haven't really had anything else to offset that recent cost. So we had American Rescue Funds given to us during COVID to help us through these, through this, but those funds are about to run out. Adding to these mentioned costs, we have an expiring lease, rank and file contract that needs to be negotiated into this current year. We also have a new trash and recycling contract that we need to go out with it within the next six months. Adding all those pandemic costs of gasoline, utilities, photo parts, no other necessary materials, we need to operate our municipality. We are looking at rising costs on the horizon again for next year. So keeping a flat rate this year, like we did six of the past seven years, is a, is a great way for public perception, but in our opinion, it's not financially responsible to do at this point. We've been able to get by, by using American Rescue Funds the last few years and borrowing funds from other accounts, such as open space and other funds when needed. We kept the budget flat again this year, our situation would be even more dire next year. We're currently using one point one million in American Rescue Funds this year and only have two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars remaining from the original three million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars we were awarded. This alone starts us off at an eight hundred and forty thousand dollar deficit next year. We're taking two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our open space fund this year. We shouldn't make this a yearly habit, so if we take this out of our next year budget, this would add another two hundred and fifty thousand to our deficit to start next year. We have the union contracts that have yearly raises that are worked into their contract, plus the lease contract and trash recycling bid that I mentioned. It's possible we're starting next year at a one point five to two million dollar shortfall as we sit here today. So unfortunately, this tax increase, although none of us are welcoming it, is very necessary. We all believe up here, every one of us, that as residents, that our township should be a place to be proud of. We have many things in our town that are very unique. Washington Lake Park is a unique park, it's beautiful. There are very few places anywhere to have a place like that. But we're lucky to have such a treasure, but it takes money to take care of it and, and to keep it that way. People love to throw around the word Premier, the condescending manner way too often about speaking of our town. That just isn't right. We need to figure out how to get our community back to feeling proud about our township. Need to stop looking for ways to cast negativity towards our town, start being part of the solution. So that, this is our town. We are all in this together, every one of us, the people up here and our residents. We, as council, are going to do our best to look at everything and anything we can to cut these costs, but not cut services or quality. Honestly, we would love to give our residents more than we are currently given. Our mission from today moving forward is to figure out how to cover these continuing rising costs without hurting our residents. We'll work together with all township employees, entities and departments to figure this out. We sit here struggling with a decision to do what's right for our township, but knowing it hurts our residents, ourselves and our families. It is not an easy decision, but we are elected to do what's best for our township and our residents. We will not make any decisions based on personal feelings, of course, or of course, of how it will be perceived during an upcoming election. We will make any and all decisions based on what is best for our town and for the residents at the time, with the information we have at this time. We will not be short sighted and look just for today or tomorrow, but for the next year or two. We have to be proactive and plan ahead so our town is strong, able to prosper, but be prepared, be prepared for whatever is thrown our way. Our goal every day is for us to make township better tomorrow than it is today. So with that, we will move forward with the budget. Does anybody have anything there like that?
I do, Council President. Good evening, Mayor, Councilman and fellow residents. As I sit here tonight, I can't help feel saddened for our residents. This is hardening here, our community struggling under the weight of financial mismanagement and irresponsible decision-making, Mayor. I'm deeply disappointed with your recent decision to raise property taxes in our town. As a resident and taxpayer, I feel this decision is financially irresponsible, letting down the fifty thousand us hold this home. Our residents deserve better than this. They deserve leaders who are accountable, transparent, will make decisions that benefit the entire community. They deserve a town that is financially stable, that can provide the surplus of resources they need to thrive. Mayor, for the last six years you've been in office, I believe you spent an education. You have no idea about the monthly numbers, and I know this in fact, because when I sat with the gentleman and answered about financial budgets, you had no idea. This is unacceptable. It's not right to ask homeowners to prepare the brunt of town's financial needs when there are other ways to generate revenue. You're not doing what's best for our community. These actions are running our town into the ground, and when sadly we're taking our residents down with it, we need leaders who are financially responsible and make decisions that benefit the entire community, not just a select few. We need transparency and accountability in our budget process, and we need to work together, find solutions that work for everyone. Raising taxes is not always the answer, and it's hurting our community. We need to find other ways to generate revenue and make sure that our town is financially stable for this generation, for current residents and for the years to come. It's time for us to come together, as a community, demand better. We need our leaders and to be accountable at all levels and demand transparency in the budget process. We need to work together to find solutions that work for everyone and will ensure long-term financial stability of our town. I believe we can do better, and we will. I know that our community is strong enough to overcome these challenges. Let's work together to build a brighter future for our town and its residents. Thank you for your attention. I hope we can work together and find a better way for our town and residents deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor DeBorrello. Have you got anything?
Yes, um, I want to say that I think that the job you've done, Council President Anthony, is spectacular. What you have done, I mean, sums it up in a nutshell, but it's not a nutshell. This is a complex community to run, fiscal and physical. We have great, great employees who work for this ability and have a feel that sometimes you see them, sometimes you don't. Sometimes they're working behind the scenes, and they do a fantastic job. All of us up here on council have gotten those feeling people in the past five months since we've been here. We have an excellent working relationship with the mayor and her administration. So unfortunately, um, over the past six years, I find that taxes weren't raised, um, in accordance with the spending, or the spending wasn't adjusted. Yes, we have inflation, we're all facing that now, and that's, that's, that's rung right now, why we have to raise this. Because, as I'm sure we all know, our medical bills, our medical insurance has gone up. Fuel costs have gone up, food prices have gone up. None of us can escape that. And we've been promoting bringing in more business, along with Mayor and business, uh, Adrian Nancy, because we realize we need more rateables. We need to make this a great place for businesses to come to. And one of the reasons I'm sponsoring, uh, the ordinance that's coming up shortly, uh, for businesses, is pro-business and it's got to streamline an antiquated anti-business ordinance from the back or something like that. But none of us want to see an increase, no optish. We would like to see this four cents become a four cent credit that we can at this time. And nobody wants to raise taxes for dying, we just don't want to do it. But as Councilman Anthony said, it's the fiscal thing, fiscally responsible thing to do. We've also by COVID, businesses have come and gone, and we can't let our fiscal situation improve. We won't let it happen. So I'm gonna put, um, yes, kind of what Anthony has proposed, and I have to work very hard to bring in more rateables so that this time next year, we're not sitting here saying we have to have this increase. My goal is to have a flat line or see if we can have a tax decrease, which can be with fiscal responsibility. But we want to make sure it's a safety. We're not gonna cut the police budget, we're not gonna go after the police. I know that the police are hiring more because we live in an environment, a society today that's increasingly dangerous. You can see that around the county, you can see it around town. So your safety is the health and safety of our citizens, and we're gonna pursue that, along with Police Chief on our department and all the other people. We're gonna work with our engineers, bring in more rateables, such as you saw here today. Just ask for your patience, work with us, work with us. Know what we've been going through, and that's my job, everyone up here has done, to try to get this budget together. Thank you very much.
Can you ask me, or just, Councilor DeBorrello?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank this package for the consciousness of the, uh, educating, re-educating young budget process. My experience, our commission, I did have experience going over municipal budgets, but fluid and rusty. She took the time and the patience to, uh, answer my questions. Thinking how realize the government is a business, uh, it has to be run like a business. The revenues, expenditures, hire, we fire, all the rules and regulations, not only the employees of the town, but also for, for, um, the residents. This year, we use surplus, which is based on, to, um, offset the tax, um, increase. But while it's acceptable in practice for the surplus to be used, um, my belief is that surplus is to be sparingly so that it doesn't affect our credit rating negatively or leave us in a situation where we cannot request bonds or, um, have our, again, have our, uh, credit rating reduced. We need to look for more revenue streams. While many of us have, or have thoughts on the cannabis situation, we'll see some more income from that. But we also need to make sure that there are other forms of revenue, um, that help offset the increased fees this year, which will hopefully generate some more income for us. But my goal is to make sure that we're not robbing Peter to pay Paul. We shouldn't be taking the open space. We should be relying on the income and revenue that we generate and use our, um, surplus sparingly. So that's, that's my thought, and as painful it is for us to sit up here and do that, whether we like it or not, um, there has to be yearly some type of increase, whether it be cent or something, just to make up or increase costs. Council, uh, President mentioned the American Rescue Funds, use that to offset, um, you know, keep the budget low as much as we can. That ends next year. So it's our responsibility to make sure that we have different revenue constraints that support, um, our tax base and also so we don't have to, um, eliminate, uh, programs that residents value so much in this town, to keep our parks. And also look at other, um, areas of the town that might be deficient in open space where parks, um, are just so. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor DeBorrello.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay, who do you want to roll call? Chris?
Mr. Yurkis?
Yes.
Mr. DeBorrello?
Sadly, yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Delphie?
Yes.
We're gonna move on to ordinances. Ordinance ten is up for adoption after a public hearing. It's ordinances for various capital improvements and related expenses in and for the township for twenty twenty-three. Can I get a motion to open to the public for ordinance ten?
Make a motion.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak on ordinance ten, please come up, state your name and address. Seeing none, can I get a motion to close to the public for ordinance ten?
Motion.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to adopt ordinance ten?
Motion.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Yurkis?
Yes.
Mr. DeBorrello?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Delphie?
Yes.
Ordinance twelve is up for introduction only. Ordinance of the township of Washington Code entitled zoning. Can I get a motion to introduce ordinance twelve?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Yurkis?
Yes.
Mr. DeBorrello?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Delphie?
Yes.
I'll look here and the adoption will take place on June twenty-eighth. We're gonna move on to resolutions. Final resolutions are by a set agenda only and require a vote for all listed. Each one must be read by title. If any member of council wishes to have one removed and heard separately, they need to indicate it prior to the reading of the, of the titles.
Anybody here can approve?
No.
Resolution one fifty-six to one seventy-nine, resolutions to authorize the renewals of liquor licenses for the following businesses. Gushi Moto, Adobe's Neighborhood Grill and Bar, Alaro Turnersville, Greenwood Park Bell's Lake Community Club liquor license, Ali Del Ice Arena, House of Brews, Life of Columbus Home Association, Liquor Hut, Luna Rosa, Mr. Liquor, Oso in the Green, Outback Steakhouse in Carrabas, P K Williams, Selena Wine and Liquor, Shop Right Liquors, Terranova, T T I Friday's Restaurant, Township Liquors, Two Mars Discount Liquors, Village Pub, Washington Square Liquor LLC liquor license, Divisive Wedgewood Country Club, the Whitman Diner, Whitman Square Men's Club. Resolution one eighty, resolution returning two hundred dollars cash security bond for peddler's license to the bonding agent, Jason De Jose. Resolution one eighty-one, resolution authorizing the removal and installation of the fuel system at the public works facility, the township of Washington through state contract with EO, At Hager Company, Inc. Resolution one eighty-two, resolution awarding a contract to Flock Group, Inc., for flock safety for the police department. Resolution one eighty-three, resolution awarding a contract for the Camden County Educational Services cooperative to South Jersey Turf Consultants LLC, for turf application and service for the Washington Township Soccer Complex. Resolution one eighty-four, resolution accepting a maintenance guarantee from paving plus LLC for the Washington Lake Park Anthony renovations, phase two. Resolution one eighty-five, resolution authorizing a refund on tax overpayments. And resolution one eighty-six, resolution approving an agreement between the township of Washington, American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIL of New Jersey, Council sixty-three, Local three-three-zero-three A. Can I get a motion to approve resolutions one fifty-six through one eighty-six?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Yurkis?
Yes.
Mr. DeBorrello?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Delphie?
Yes.
We're gonna move on to all business and new business.
Start with, uh, Councilor Yurkis?
We had the Royal Lab observed on the Royal Day, and it was a great day, the weather was fantastic, there's some great guest speakers. And we'll all attend it, uh, for those that you can, thank you, and we hope to see you with better and safer service.
Thank you, Councilor Yurkis. Councilor DeBorrello?
Wasn't ready for that chirp one. Uh, first we had Elegance Home and Gifts that opened in Chompers Lane, so anyone can check them out, awesome place. And Belge Bet's open, got to share with them, so if you need to have a bet here in town. Work Bagging celebrated twenty-three plus years in Washington Township, so go see Chris at Work Bagging, thank you, twenty-three plus years here. Money Dog Roofing open here in town, so if anyone needs that, please check them out as well. Also, congratulations to all the twenty twenty-three grads, all agents and all braves. Got to attend the high school, appreciated, it was great.
Thank you, Councilor DeBorrello. Councilor Brown?
Yes, uh, it was an honor and privilege to attend with Councilman Mayor for the, uh, twenty twenty-three reservation. All the clients sitting up there, uh, watching the young men and women, uh, walking into their homes. Just a reminder, we're gonna sign up for Everbridge, haven't not so yet picked up one of the cards up there, uh, and, uh, create an account. If you have any questions, please reach out to me. I'll look into assistance in setting up the account. The library, I want to announce their summer kickoff reading program on June 22nd, seven, sorry, seven o'clock, eight o'clock. We've loaded our website for further information. Kylie, myself, and Nancy Unzakio are just following up with catalyst, and hopefully have some resolution to that shortly. Basically, our is going to turn on in the end of June, early July, so we're pulling into that demo.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. Councilman Bennett?
I'd like to thank Jack for the great speaker at the Royal Day ceremony. Very inspirational, you did a great job, Jack. Real great job. The Old Stone House will be having a food truck celebration on August 12th with beer and wine come out. And that does happen, it's a great weekend, and money goes towards veteran, able to stone house complex. Also working with the police department to do a chalk art contest, which runs from June to August. I got donated 100 things of chalk, and I'd like parents to get out with their kids and be able to draw the theme of the month on their sidewalk or their street and, you know, become a part of a family and do things, have fun. And then the police department will take pictures of it and post the winners each one. It's a great thing. Take advantage of that.
Thank you, Councilman Bennett. We're gonna throw it back to Councilman Yurkis for a second. Okay? In conclusion for Flag Day, everybody else a quote, "I am not certain if I can, at least I clearly tried, for the red, the white, and the blue. Your country's flag behold," this was said by Betsy Ross to General George Washington. Thank you, Councilman Yurkis.
Oh, one more thing. This afternoon, the American Legion, in honor of Flag Day, did a s- a stonewall of flag ceremony in Washington Lake Park in the fire area, and it was a great way for them to show how the properly the flags are disposed of, where they really come from houses or come from cemeteries, and the right disposal. So thank our from the veterans for taking care of that, and it was a great, a great little ceremony. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Bennett. Mr. Black?
Nothing for me, no, it's a present.
Thank you. Ms. Backish? Thank you. Ms. Smear?
Nothing.
Thank you, Ms. Smear.
Thanks for Flag Day. Let's say, Congratulations to Flag Day. Royal Day celebration was great. Councilman Yurkis had a great speech. It was a great ceremony, everybody gets a chance to attend. Highly recommend attending one of our ceremonial ceremonies we have. They're really nice to attend. We attended the graduation, we're gonna congratulate our 2023 high school graduates. Wish them all the best in all their endeavors. I wanna take a minute to offer my condolences to the high school student who drowned in Pittman, body of Victor Rodriguez, who we each are graduating as well. Just remind us how precious life is and how short it is. So, you know, I just wanna give Pittman our condolences on behalf of the mayor and council that, you know, our neighbor knows that we're there for them. The police had pulled off a cop at Ritas, which was a great event. They had their cops and bombers this coming Thursday, tomorrow night, and they'll have one more next Thursday over at the pond at the police station, so come out, bring your grandchildren, your kids, it's a great event. Chief and his staff do a great job of that. Perdol Park is open, is located at Cedar Lake Park. Stop by the clerk's office to purchase a permit. Costs us $10 for township residents and $20 for non-residents in township. Municipal complex has begun in summer hours. Officer offices will be closed every Friday from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Municipal complex hours are now 8:30 to 4:30. Municipal complex will be closed on June 19th and observance of Juneteenth. Effect of July 19th, council meetings will commence at 6:00 PM. Please join us for movies and musics in the park. Bob Pantander presents the legendary Blue News this Friday, June 16th. The sensation of soul cruisers will perform on a Sunday, June 18th. Information can be found on the calendar on the website. Father's Day is this Sunday, June 18th. Wish you and everybody a happy Father's Day who's out there. Fourth of July parade will begin at 6:00 PM followed by fireworks. If you or anyone you know are interested in participating, please contact Lisa Collins at lcollins@township.washington nj.us. We're gonna move on to our public participation. Please follow the public decorum pursuit, which has also been attached to the public agenda. Limit your comments to five minutes. Once you have completed your comments or questions, please take a seat. I will then ask if any member of the governing body or their designated wishes to address your comments or questions asked by the person who just voted. Can I get a motion to open to the public?
Motion.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
We're now open to the public. Please come up, state your name and address if you wish to speak.
My name is Maxie Kandios. I am a 44-year resident of Washington Township. I live at 911 Whitman Drive in Turnersville. And I am a resident of Whitman Square, and I truly love my community. It has come to my intention that the owner of 908 Whitman Drive has been in discussion with Rising Sun Recovery LLC of Cherryville, New Jersey to rent this property to them. Rising Sun Recovery has applied for licensed own operating of cooperative self-living residents, which is a CSLR at 908 Whitman Drive. I have campus and neighborhood asking residents their views. I have contacted over 85 residents that reside close to the aforementioned home. The majority are strongly against having this type of residence in our neighborhood. And the key point is, this property is surrounded by mainly senior citizens. The children of this development are walking students. The home is .4 mile, .49 miles as a proclivity from Whitman School. This company, Rising Sun Recovery, is a for-profit business, which Whitman Square is not zoned to accommodate this type of venue. I understand that the residents of this facility must work. There is a lack of convenient transportation in this area. The buses are one mile away. There can be eight residents in this facility, the property parking is not adequate. Also, per state regulations for this property, this type of facility does not have to have full-time supervision. How can we, as residents, be sure that drugs alcohol are being enforced? There have been many calls to councilmen, mayor's office, and zoning expressing displeasure of this issue. The Whitman Square residents' safety and home ownership values need to be what the council needs to consider. I strongly request that you take the proper action not to allow this CSLR in our neighborhood.
Thank you, Maxie.
You're welcome.
So, actually, I spoke on the phone.
Okay.
I talked to the city hall also about this issue. City hall's beginning to have to come for the zoning board for these variables. Note, I checked the state's file box to see if there's such applications made, and so so far, nothing's pending. I'm not sure if they're gonna come in for zoning permits or not, but if they do, it'll be up to the zoning board, it'll be noticed. If you're looking to identify that problem, which I'm sure you do, you can come out and express those views to the zoning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maxie.
Thank you, Maxie.
Good morning, my name is Charles Knight, over in Detroit. I've lived here 46 years, and I find that all of a sudden, we have a situation where a private homeowner arbitrarily decides to rent to a business that is going to create public safety as well as potential public evaluation. It's a problem I have, and I believe, as Maxine said, others than seventy-five people already sign displeasures. I asked specifically, could I rent bedrooms to two of my friends? Friends who I know are losing, one is losing a home, the other one can no longer maintain. I was told, no. But later, I could request a varnings. Now, if I'm gonna have a home, just drawing a couple guys, and we're gonna have unknown, unsupervised recovering alcoholics and drug users, that's a significant problem with the community. On one side, seniors, senior citizens. The other side, first they moved in their neighborhood, a young couple, a year old and a five-year-old. I wouldn't trust them, and I was, a drug and alcohol counselor in the community. I know the problems of recovery. Without supervision, it doesn't. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Yurkis. Thank you for your service. Anybody else wishing to speak?
My name is Cheryl Hannah, and I live on 6 Colonial Drive in Turnersville. And I know this is my third time, so I'm pretty sure you all know why I'm here, so just kind of reiterate. I live next to the Washington Township Municipal Golf Course, right next to the Fifth Fourth. And the reason why I'm here, I just wanted to see if there was any further discussions about any type of resolutions, or if there's going on with my situation. I'll be honest with you, nothing has changed. I can count from Saturday to Sunday, which I do, all the walls that fall in my yard in front of my house, and last week was 36, and from Sundays to this Wednesday, where it's been set already. Before I came here, there was one in the middle of the street, which wasn't even across from my house, so it was street over the golf course, and then one on the sidewalk. Main court, I was hit in my yard, and that's the first, and I did mention that before in the previous council meetings here, that it's not a matter of if, it's when I get hit. And I'll be quite honest with you, I was very frustrated, and I did reach out to attorney. I also wanna say now, besides me being afraid of being in my yard, when I do do yard work, I'm outside with my daughter's sophomore home because I don't wanna get hit. I can't have people in my yard, I can't have parties in my house. It's very frustrating, and I pay taxes on my house, and I can't visit. And again, I kind of brought over the fact that none of this was disclosed to me, and I want the house, and it's just very frustrating. You know, I want to believe that the town council has my back, but I just don't know what to do, and that's what prompted me to contact an attorney, and he actually wrote me a letter, because he originally suggested that I come to the local town council to see if there was some type of resolution, so if I can read the letter that he sent me. So, this is from Harvey Shelton Hoffman from Mucio, and this is actually from Joseph Hoffman Jr. Esquire, which is a partner. So he writes, "Dear Cheryl, I just wanted to follow up on our telephone conversation on May 22nd, 2023. To say the least, I am quite disappointed to hear that the governing body of Washington Township has yet to resolve the issue relating to the fact that many of your family members are still experiencing the danger of being seriously injured or even killed by one of the golfers on the public course adjacent to your home. I find it totally unacceptable to have your legitimate concerns being ignored, especially considering that you were actually hit by a strikeoff ball on Main Court of the Year. Furthermore, as I understand, your car has been dented on two separate occasions to the strikeoff holes, your outside walls have been hit, the dented, and your patio table has harmed your house, has been broken twice as well, it's dispossessed and apart from your basement windows being shattered, not to mention numerous cracks on the siding of your house. It is my suggestion that you address your concerns to the governing body one more time. I do not know any of that on a personal level, but I must advise that the reputation for caring about the welfare of the residents is an excellent. It is for this reason that I would strongly urge you to speak with them the next time and let them know that you sought legal counsel with regard to this unknown problem. It's my hope that by doing so, my landowners will be rightfully on your property and lies similar to those of citizens in the bank department for the Philadelphia Police Department and inside the Boston Harbor Center during the flyers campaign. Because of this very serious danger which you continue to face each and every day, if the governing body does not take action, please call me and I will introduce you to the head of our civil litigation department. If the laws of court become necessary, we will be filing for both compensatory and punitive damages based on the fact that no action has been taken, despite the daily anxiety and stress that you have been facing each and every day over the past few years. It's my hope that responsible individuals such as Mayor Kent Malley and the members of township committee will take appropriate action to give you the discipline that you most certainly deserve. All of the members of the governing body are well-respected members of the community, and I just cannot see them turning their back on you, especially in light of the fact that you were just recently hit. God forbid if you or your daughter or anyone visiting your home sustained serious injuries or death. In such an event, the township will be facing potentially a huge verdict, being rendered against it with no guarantee of repair or providing coverage in light of the fact that the township had known of this of the dangerous condition and failed to take reasonable steps to address this thing. On a personal note, let me, let me just say that I find you to be a very nice young lady, and you managed to handle yourself admirably over these circumstances by the anxiety and stress that the situation has caused you. I hope and pray that the governing body will do a cost-benefit analysis as a council conclusion that is, it is in their best interest financially to take care of the problem as part of their responsibility in protecting the residents that you serve.
Are you sure? You really think that is a law?
Sure. Just wanted to, no matter what my words, that's good word to you.
Yes, not since.
Yeah, come on. I mean, I, I could tell you, we, we did have a meeting. Mayor sat in with me, and Anthony Bedfield runs the golf course, and we came up with some things to try to mitigate what's going on. I don't know if they hired anybody, but they were gonna hire somebody to sit on that hole. They were gonna have new signs put up, felt using proper clubs, make sure people weren't messing around, and we spent, I mean, two hours in a meeting, one morning, to go over things to make hole five. I mean, we couldn't stop it, but we cut it in half. So, we were saying, obviously, it didn't improve at all. So I don't know what, if any of those things were instituted or not, I know signs were being made. I can follow up and see if any of those were even instituted, but we did look into hiring somebody to sit at the tee box on hole five, make sure the kids weren't just messing around, you know, hitting two, three, four balls into your yard, make sure there's proper signs so they're not using drivers on your hole that hit into your yard. And there was something else, oh, we said I was drinking, to make sure nobody was drinking on the course, to make sure that they were acting properly when they're above people's private property. So we can look into making sure that police therapy is taken care of. One of the issues we were worried about, what we talked about, was how big are they going to put? Do you go 20 feet, and then hit the ball 30 feet? Hit 30 feet, it's about 40 feet? And then is it off the tee box? If I remember right, that hole has a dip, right? Off the tee box, there's a big dip before you get to your green to your house. Are they hitting the ball from that dip into your yard? Then they're really not hitting it from the tee box, which is a whole other issue.
It's, it's the tee.
It's from the tee.
And so what I will tell you, it's not, it's not the fact that people going on the golf course drunk, these are regular golfers. They were probably in their mid, like 60 years old. There was two gentlemen and a woman, and the woman was probably about 55, they weren't drinking. It's just bad golfing. And when I asked them, even after they hit me, when I asked them, they said there's no regulations of golf course, like the golf clubs that they can use on, and that was on Main Court. I will tell you that, I guess, and I didn't realize this, that they can actually move the hole in the green. When they move the hole further back, I get less balls. So I actually would like to see if there's the possibility of not even re-engineering or reconfiguring the course, but moving the tee and moving the hole further back.
Maybe if you could put the hole maybe back right quadrant. Maybe if you could put the hole maybe in the back right quadrant of, of the green, your house sits here, they could drill the hole in this back corner, sort of falls away from the right corner of the house.
Right, because the, the next hole, which I've got, I guess is hole six, the tee is right back up to my fence. So when I see them, even as hard as they swing, it's not going over the person's yard because it's further back. So I think moving the tee further back and then moving the hole further back would probably alleviate a lot of it, and it wouldn't take even reconfiguring the golf course itself. Because I will tell you, when the hole gets moved further back, I get less balls in the yard. But, but here's the other thing too, that I wanted to, to address, and it's not just my house, but I'm finding the balls in the middle of the street, so like I, you know, when we spoke last time, and I know you said because my, you know, house was built after the golf course, but if the ball hits a, a parlay capacity, how do you explain to that person? Like, you know, what, you're not supposed to be driving on, on a public street, you're not supposed to be walking on the public sidewalk, you get hit? Like, it's, it's kind of, you know, it's kind of insane. I don't know what else to do, and I really am trying to work with the township, and hopefully you guys work with me, I understand. I'm a single mom, like, I wanted to buy my house to give my daughter a fight, and I can't even do that. Like, I wanna have parties and parties, and I wanna have her graduation at my house, and I can't. I have to go in my yard with a helmet on, and I have people laughing at me. I wanna take pictures of fans, if you could post it on the website, I don't care, like, it's very frustrating. I can't move, I can't sell my home. I don't know what else to do. That's why I'm begging you, please do something. I don't wanna sue the township, I just wanna live in my home and enjoy it, like everybody else gets to do. Thank you.
Are you sure? We'll, we'll talk about, we talked about the whole placement, and, um, mayor, so, is mayor's okay if they look into it? We posted, maybe, like you said, maybe we push the tee, tee box to one side, the hole to one side, maybe it can alleviate from thirty-six balls to eighteen balls, and then we can try to work that way, I mean, there's only.
Just, just something, because nothing has changed.
Okay.
So even if, I don't, I don't know what the superintendent has done anything, I don't know, but I don't see a ranger.
We'll follow up on that as well, because we did have a meeting, and we, we did, we did address your concerns going into the season to try to alleviate some of that. So we'll follow up on that, and we'll, we'll take your suggestions on about moving that hole, if that helps alleviate it, then that's something we could look into.
Yeah, sure, when we were out there, I did interview some of the golfers, they were different ages, and I told them the problems were out of it, and they all said, that should not be happening, there's something wrong, because, number one, the, the ball should not be hitting you or your, or, number two, the ball should not be hitting the street. So, it's the golfer, you can make the adjustments, I'm not a golfer, so I don't know that much about it, but certainly we have to make adjustments. Um, but I can hear the signs are being made, and there's a big sign that's gonna go saying, no, don't, don't drink. Uh, because I understand, talking to some people, that that can lead to years, well, that can lead to people all of a sudden, you know, overachieving themselves, and drive that hole a month, and that's really dangerous.
And then the fact that, yeah, the fact that it's been cleaned up, and now, you know, there's three times the business, three times the people, three times the amount of balls, and again, like, I, I was not aware of any of those things about the house, because honestly, I knew it was gonna come with many problems, but within a quarter.
We also looked into, looking into two blocks and what, we've been talking about that. Maybe, you know, then, then all you do is just move the problem to the other end, because there's houses in the other end, so regardless, there's houses that go one side to the other, so, I mean, it's really not fixed. So, we're just gonna try to minimize what we add, and then kind of make it, you know, alleviate what we can for, for Cheryl. So, but, um, we'll opt up with the mayor, and we'll, we'll follow up tomorrow and try to get some answers of what was done and done. Your suggestions, and see what we get to the start, you know, getting this moving in the right direction.
Thank you, I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Cheryl, appreciate coming. Councilman President, also looks like on the bill, it said we did vote for new signs for the golf course, so it was, it was. Okay. Okay, we'll follow up, and we'll get a status update to see where they're at with everything we discussed, okay? Thank you.
Anybody else, uh, wish to speak? See, none, can I get a motion to close to the public?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, aye.
Okay, we're gonna move to executive session. Now, we're gonna go into executive session, we expect the executive sessions to last about sixty minutes. We do not anticipate any action being taken, but we do have the right to take action if necessary, correct?
Perfect.
Uh, can I get a motion to.
I'd like to overprop that, what's that, over, uh, overprop some of the.
Yeah, perfect. All right, all right. Can I get a motion to approve resolution one eighty-seven?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Mr. Yurkis?
Yes.
Mr. DeBarrolo?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Delapio?
Yes.
Now, we're gonna turn to.